So then I asked the question, how much are we writing off every year? And if you want to go back to 1999, how much have you written off of 99 moving forward? And that's where you got your $24 million. And so whatever your subliminal question or whatever you're trying to find out, then you need to talk to the city manager on that. But this council had never approved any write-offs and never seen any write-offs.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. I think we're drifting a little bit off of the motion in the second one we have on item 11 on the agenda. Is there any additional discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just wanted to bring something to the council's attention. We sent around a revised amendment to the resolution related to positions for next year. The amendment includes the Director of Business and Collection Services. Why didn't you have previously inadvertently left that off to us?
Okay. And this is item 11 specifically. Okay. May we take a moment to read this? Are there any questions regarding interested in the manager proceeding?
There was just only that one that was added to what was already being already seen, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
So I guess whoever made the motion, you can amend the motion to include this disposition, correct?
It would include the amended resolution.
Okay, thanks. I make the motion that we include the amended recommendation.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Joyner.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knight. Is there additional discussion on item 11? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
And Miller.
Councilmember Miller? Thank you. Okay, and moves this to Agenda Item Number 12. She sent this. She wrote once, but it's okay. Item 11 was amended, executed, and then it's just voted in. That's right. Item 12 was consideration of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget ordinance amendment appropriating funds in the self-insurance internal service fund. $2 million covers claims expense during the current and prior fiscal years. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Joyner.
This is 12.
This is 12. Is there a need for discussion?
I've got a question.
Councilman Daughtryde.
I had this question, and I don't recall if it was answered during the bunch of time, but my experience with being self-insured, there's a self-insurance pool fund. And I asked the question during the budget session, what is our fund value? Or how do we fund that? Or is it different for the municipality? And I'm not aware of that. If it is, please explain.
From the standpoint of how the fund is funded?
Well, each year you fund, my understanding, my experience with it, you fund it every year, and then it accumulates. So therefore, when you get catastrophic claims and so forth, they can be paid from that. Is it different in the municipality? Or is that how it is? And if you do accumulate the funds, what is the value of that fund?
So what we try to do is obviously, if it is more of a pay-go situation, we do in the financial statements, provide the actuarial analysis of the potential liability with respect to retirees that are on the fund. From the standpoint of what we are able to do, and this is consistent with what the state allows requires, is that we do pay for it in the current year. We do have a stop-loss policy in place, a stop gap, I believe it's around $250,000 per member per incident. We do have that in place. It's an additional insurance that's part of the premium that we pay as both the employee pays. So the revenues that are generated to be able to make the expenditures come from the premiums that are paid, the premiums that are paid for the individual employees plus their contributions for dependents, as well as the contributions that we make for the retiring insurance.
Maybe I'm not making myself clear. Maybe I'm not understanding correctly. So in self-insurance, you've got a pool of funds.
Yes.
And you pay that, you pay into that pool for catastrophic events and also for the up to the stop-loss, you pay out of that fund all claims. And then whatever's left over, it goes to the next year and just accumulates from year to year. And it just grows. It hopefully grows. Is that not the case in the municipality? Or did we just, or to your point, I may afford this, we just fund it as we need to? So therefore, the requirement that private industry has to meet is different for the municipality or government? Is that the case, Madam?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And we do pay, there is sometimes a fund balance that carries over, and then sometimes we have to reclaim that fund balance from year to year.
So do we, does the fund balance go from year to year? And if so, what is our balance now that is rolled over from year to year?
I don't know what our balance is currently. But it's not, it's not like we're trying to build it. We're not in a position, we have not been in a position, given our financial position overall in the community, to be able to build that fund up year to year.
Madam Manager, can we find out what the pool balance is on that?
Certainly. Well, I mean, we do have a judiciary responsibility, obviously, to make sure that sufficient funds are in there to pay our claims.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're not going to fund it. I'm just curious what the fund balance is, as mentioned in the budget meeting.
Is there any additional discussion regarding item 12 on the agenda? Hearing a call for none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 13 on the agenda is the consideration of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget ordinance amendment appropriating funds to cover expenditures for operations at the Rocky Mountain Defense Center from April 2020 to June 2020. $251,260 revenues not available due to closure facility compliance with required response to COVID-19 pandemic. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
No vote.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a call for discussion on item 13?
I wonder whether we will know whether we want to get funds that might be applied towards the loss remedy.
Well, I'd prefer to see, Madam, I think we have to open first.
Yes, exactly. So these funds are meant for us to be able to offset the expenses rather than the revenue, I guess is a different way of asking or answering that question. But we haven't opened yet, but to my knowledge, I don't think that there is any federal funding that would be coming to us to offset the loss, other than the expenditures that we have still to, you know, maintain the defense center. So that's what this is really about. This is what you call the Payroll Protection Act, that you heard about very early on during the pandemic.
Is there additional questions or additional questions or conversation related to item 13? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14 is consideration of renewal of joint cooperative agreement between the city as lead entity and other members of the Down East Home Consortium, which are Spring Hope, High Tops, Plitikers, Edgecombe County, Sharksburg, Principal, Middlesex, Cundee, and Rocky Mount. Recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor and city court to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Miller, is there a second? Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a call for conversation or discussion on item 14? Hearing none, I'll ask for the voice vote.
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Okay, motion carries. Item 15 on the agenda is consideration of the Urgent Repair Program Assistance Policy, the Urgent Repair Program Procurement and Dispersment Policy, details eligibility requirements for program participants, selection process, and overall program processes. And three, the Urgent Repair Program Post-Approval Documentation. Recommended action is to approve, adopt the Urgent Repair Program Assistance Policy, to approve and adopt the Urgent Repair Program Procurement and Dispersment Policy. And three, authorize the mayor and adjourned city court to execute the prior documentation on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Knight, second. Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on item 15?
Mr. Mayor, what we're circling early today, Councilmember Daughtryde asked about the approved community development rehabilitation contractors, so this is information that was requested.
The item 15.
Excuse me, are these the contractors that work with the urgent repair?
Yes, sir.
And do we know what we pay the contractors to do, to run that, I mean, to do the, I guess inspections, correct?
No, sir. Those are actual contracts who are going to actually do the actual fiscal recap work for each project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any additional conversation? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote on the motion on the floor.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Motion carries. Yes, sir, Councilman Knight, recognize.
Are any of these contractors minority contractors?
Yes, sir. You will see on the information that was presented there, the MWP, so they were the ones who answered yes.
Okay, I see you. At age of 51, not wearing glasses, yeah, I see you. Thank you.
Item 16 on the agenda is consideration approval of award of duty sidearms and badges to the following retiring police officers for their dedicated service. Sergeant Leslie Wayne Harrell for 30 years of service, his retirement date will be July 1, 2020. Senior police officer Teresa Blaster, she served 14 and a half years of service, and her retirement date will be July 1, 2020. Officer Blaster will pay $350 for her sidearm, subject to retirement with less than 20 years of service pursuant to city policy. Recommended action is to approve the award of duty sidearms and badges.
Please for approval.
Councilman Daughtryde, motion made, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on item 16, the motion on the floor?
No.
Hearing none, I'll ask for the voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Item 17 on, the motion carries. Item 17 is consideration of water assessment contract with Edna R. Robertson for water service at 1125 Freeder Drive. That's $265 water meter capacity fees prepaid and $4,000 water main and tap fee to be assessed. Recommended action is to approve contract and authorize the mayor and city court to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilwoman Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion regarding the motion on the floor?
Not regarding this motion, Mr. Mayor, but alive, I asked the city manager if she would in the future just inform us of the fire districts as we annex individuals in, as well as which were the properties, the best ones.
Right, sir. Thank you. Hearing a call for discussion, I'll ask for the voice vote for item 17.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 18 on the agenda is the consideration of petition for renunciation, number 317-4 762 Vestal Road, which is non-contiguous. The recommended action is to acknowledge received petition and to adopt the resolution ordering city court to investigate sufficiency of petition. Is there a motion to investigate sufficiency of petition? Moved by, made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Walker. Is there a need for discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll ask for the voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 19 on the agenda is consideration of the operating agreement with Duke Energy Progress LLC, allowing Rocky Mountain City employees to operate DEP system under certain conditions in order to provide faster response time during power outages. Recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtryde, second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Is there a need for discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 20 on the agenda is consideration of declaration declaring certain personal property surplus and authorizing disposal by electronic auction via GovDeals Inc. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring property surplus and authorizing disposal by electronic auction. Is there a motion?
No move.
Moved by, motion made by Councilman Bullock, seconded by, is it Daughtryde? Daughtryde. Is there a need for discussion on item 20, motion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 21 on the agenda, which are appointments, if you might have an appointment that I would like to bring for the city council. All right, Jeffrey Cooper? And for which committee? Councilman Joyner. So contingent upon receipt of personal history and property documentation, say. All right, I've got Councilman Joyner. All right, say goodbye. Councilman Miller, is there a need for discussion on this? All right, I guess voice vote's what we need. So I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, so, all right. Councilman Blackwell, I believe you had some business that you want to bring up here at the end as it related to COVID and wearing masks. Yes, Councilman Miller?
I have a nomination.
I'm sorry?
To work with housing advisory committee.
Okay.
To speak to the housing advisory commission.
All right, housing advisory commission, recommendation, I guess, pending, you know, all the approval forms. And the name of the?
Michael Moser, please.
All right, say goodbye, Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion?
Could you repeat the name? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Michael Moser.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, jumped a gun a little early on the last one. Is there any other nominations that we should consider as my four appointments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Councilman Blackwell. We had some discussion, and perhaps we'll make a motion related to COVID-19 and wearing masks.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to move that the city of Rocky Mount adopt a stance that requires all citizens when they are in public places and restaurants and gathering places to wear masks, similar to the Raleigh ordinance and others in ours around here.
Okay. All right, say goodbye.
Let me add, to adopt an order, Chicago had it in Whitey, so they have to bring it back.
Okay. Okay.
So should we make that statement for the record? We have a second, and then we'll have a writing, and we'll make sure it's on the agenda the next week.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Knight, I believe you also had some business that you wanted to add to.
What I heard Dr. Nelson and Cooper Blackwell stating, that the city would help provide technical support and funding to help in the planning and pre-development costs of black business districts, business matter zone and development, and to obtain some of the corporate investment and capitalize on this moment. So again, when I asked city manager a few moments ago, could we provide that and some funding to assist with that, looking at the climate of this racial undertone in our country and how other cities and municipalities are stepping up to the plate and assisting the African-American community. So I would like to make a motion that we request at least $25,000 to $50,000 in subsidies for planning and pre-development costs of black business matter zone and the development to help obtain the corporate investment and capitalize on this moment that we're in at this fiscal time. And this could bring in thousands or millions of dollars, something similar to what we do with Alcoyana's Gateway, what we have with Norristown.
Sir, so this is a really a pleasure amendment, I guess. How should we treat this as a pleasure amendment?
Well, I'm treating it as a motion that the city manager can figure out.
Figure it out.
That's right, okay, fine. Yeah, that's where I was trying to get at.
Correct, yes.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Knight, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on this motion?
Clarification.
Councilman Daughtryde.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry. Councilman Knight mentioned something similar to the Norristown Council's getting partnership. And so that funding, maybe I'm confused on there, is it for a position or is it for studying, you know, what needs to happen to make that district viable or?
It's, it's for funding and technical support. And the city manager within her authority will come back and tell us how it's going to, how it's going to work.
Any additional conversation or comment?
Correct, yes.
Outside of the budget, so that is.
Yes.
So is there any additional conversation or comment on the motion on the force? Hearing none, I'll ask for the voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll have that ready for the next meeting.
Thank you.
I understand now we have two items that require that we go into special session, and I'll ask the city attorney to fill in the blanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, it's attorney-client privilege session, and there will be two matters of pending litigation that have to be made public before we go into closed session discussion. The first one is American Entertainment LLC doing businesses, general play by them, be the city of Rocky Mount, pending in United States District Court for the Eastern District of North Carolina. And the second one is Harold Cox, the officer Michael Lamb, the city of Rocky Mount, former police chief James Moore, former interim police chief Willie Williams, and police chief George Robertson.
Okay, do I need a motion going to special counsel?
No move.
Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Any discussion? Voice vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We're now in closed session. Right. It's not as easy as just saying. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of the city council, which is held on June 8, 2020. Recommended action is to approve those minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'm in favor. We have to do an individual roll call, so I'll see if we can do a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Daughtryde?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Item number five on our agenda is the consideration of minutes for the regular scheduled committee of the whole meeting, which was held on June 8, 2020. Proposed annual action for fiscal, or plan for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Cynthia T. Jones, that was information only of formal action. Number two was the urgent repair program, also from, provided by Cynthia T. Jones, information only. Downtown outlet report by Kevin Harris was to provide information only of formal action. And number four, boards, commissions, committees, Pamela Casey, we did not discuss, denied by closed session, which was attorney-client privilege. Recommended action is to approve the minutes.
No move.
Movement made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Joyner. Movement made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing now, I'll ask for the vote.
Councilmember Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that brings us to item number six, which is our committee update. Uh, the motion does carry. So we'll pause for a second to see if we can let Councilmember Walker into the meeting. And then we'll proceed on to the committee update.
Thank you.
Councilman. To proceed on the reports and presentations and then we'll get to the voting actions. We'll give another pause. Councilman Walker's not with us.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, first I would like to begin by thanking our Rocky Mountain Fire Department and all city departments for the tremendous work done last week during the flooding that affected parts of our city. As of Friday, June 19, Fire Department crew led by the Swift Water Emergency Rescue Team assisted ninety-two citizens and four pets to a safe building. Approximately seventy-five residences were affected as well as twenty commercial structures in what has been ranked as the third worst flooding event in the history of our city. I stand eyes and say thanks to the city of Rocky Mountain employees who volunteered during the COVID-19 food distribution campaign held on Thursday, June 18 at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. Approximately five hundred people received boxes of fruits, vegetables, and other items that will be used to feed our communities' families. The support shown for the event was tremendous, and I'd especially like to thank Archie Jones, Director of the Human Relations Department, for the successful organization of the event as we were able to serve the public in an efficient manner. Congratulations are in order for Assistant City Manager Elton Daniels. The North Carolina City County Management Association Executive Committee has elected Mr. Daniels as the Secretary Treasurer for our organization. He will serve a one-year term that will not only help his professional growth, but also give our city a seat at the table on the state's largest local government professional organization. Congratulations, Mr. Daniels, on your performance. We know that this is a tough time for a lot of residents with layoffs and further. As a reminder, per the council's direction as well as a pair of executive orders from our governor, there is a moratorium on all utility disconnections until further notice and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are having issues or problems and need help with your bill, please contact the Business Services Center at 252-972-1250. The OIC will hold free COVID-19 testing sites at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. Walk-up testing begins Tuesday, June 23, while drive-up testing opens Tuesday, June 30. Those tested will need to bring their photo ID and insurance cards. Insurance is not required for testing. Testing days will be Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Registration can be performed prior to arriving by logging onto OICRMHUB.com. You may also call 252-210-9856 for more information. The city of Rocky Mountain will not hold its annual July 3 celebration at the Rocky Mountain Sports Conference. The safety and well-being of our citizens is a priority, and holding a mass gathering during the COVID-19 pandemic is not advisable per state and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention guidelines. We wish our citizens a safe and enjoyable time as they celebrate the upcoming holiday. Also of note, downtown live and lawn chair theory events are postponed until further notice.
Thank you, Madam Andrew. Okay, I'm sorry.
As a reminder, the Parson Recreation Department began its pair of annual summer camps this morning. The sessions are open to children ages five through twelve, and we be held at two sites, the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences and the Booker T. Washington Community Center. Camps will run June 22 through July 31, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. Camps are limited to fifty children per site. Please register in person at the Booker T. Washington Community Center or South Rocky Mountain Community Center. Call 252-467-4925 or 252-972-1169 for more information. Finally, during this time, it is important to remind you to fill out and send in your 2020 census form if you haven't already done so. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. For more information or to respond, visit 2020census.gov.
Thank you, Madam Andrew. Uh, with that, we will move on to item number eight, petitions received from the public. Uh, I'll ask Tom Harris to move to the stand to the microphone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. Uh, quite honestly, I was taken by surprise last week when I read in the local paper about the utility charge off averaging in excess of one million dollars a year over the last twenty years. My question is, or I would like to understand methodology of how these accounts are written off? Over what periods of time have they worked? How have they worked? Or any efforts made to seek recoveries? Because this dollar amount is huge. And unfortunately, with the pandemic that we have now, I can only suspect that write-offs in the 2021 fiscal year may be even higher. One item that I would like to address and find out is the application that would be forthcoming to the Local Government Commission for the Hotel Parked Ed Residential Development. Don't know where it stands, where the application is. It's probably, I suspect, that might need to be updated financially because I believe it was submitted back last August. And obviously, the hotel industry has taken a severe impact financially with the pandemic. So I would just like to know where we stand with the LGC application. I've heard this afternoon it could be a couple of months before it will be put on the agenda in Raleigh for the LGC's review and approval. Uh, I would like to know more about that when the time comes because we citizens of Rocky Mountain need to take a look at to see if the financials that go along with our proposal are conducive to the economic hardship that we are experiencing at this time. Thank you so very much for allowing me to be here in present before you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I realize that I skipped item seven, so I'll go back to that after we continue to hear the petitions from the public. I'm sorry about that. I'll ask Ms. Maureen Jenice to come to the microphone.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the person with the speaker system downstairs. It's excellent today. Last time it was kind of a little fuzzy. Um, one thing I'd like to ask is for the city council to please give the citizens that take time off work and come down here to express our concerns, if it is a yes or no answer, why can't somebody answer it? And if I have a concern, um, we fill out these papers with our phone numbers and maybe we need to put what ward I'm from so that the representative of my ward could maybe check in the things that I'm worried about. I have tried to call my representative a couple of times and the messages are always full. But anyhow, that's just the fault. I don't know who gagged or y'all that she can't say anything, what the hell. And I'm kind of concerned about, I read in the paper, um, one of the council persons that was talked about in the paper, that's just been on the council a little bit longer than maybe some of the movies. Um, what they said in the paper, I thought was very rude and uppity. To say to a new member, um, let me school you. What the hey? We are all adults. I think that was very, very rude. Um, and the new council members need to feel like they could be more open-minded and maybe the total council could be a little bit more open-minded with some new ideas and thoughts and so that Rocky Mountain could be a more positive place to live. A couple of my friends and I have been thinking about, uh, when will that forty-eight thousand dollars for you, uh, forgiven utilities ever be paid back? Because when you get your hand caught in the cookie jar, you might as well come clean. And I was gonna say something about maybe something cheaper to take care of that statute, but somebody told me forget it. Y'all already gonna decide something, doesn't matter what taxpayers say. Um, and again, please do not litter. I took three and a half hours Sunday afternoon cleaning the spot in front of my shop on 301, and there's three more pieces of litter sitting there between Wesley and where you go to get on Church Street. And I don't know what the answer to that is. But thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Jenice. I'd like to ask Reverend Neil Smith to come to the microphone.
There's an issue with, uh, with respect to the black community in this city from some business owners. We will no longer accept the blatant disrespect of Moms' seafood deli at 315 Berry Road will be the first example of a business that we will not have in our community. There will be no three-strike rule. You disrespect in any way, we put you out of business. It's just that simple. We come to the point now where we can no longer take this. And I don't care how many hot dogs she serves us, how many t-shirts she gives us. I don't care what you do, we're gonna put you out of business. Because not only do black lives matter, black matters period. And black dollars matter a whole lot. And if you don't think they do, Moms is gonna be the first example to show you that black dollars do matter. And not only that, I just want to find out who's next. Because we won't stop with Moms. There are a few others who disrespect us in this city who will show you what your disrespect means by holding back our black dollars. We have to do something about this. This is just as crazy as it can be. And it's just like you see George Floyd with a knee on his neck. You have been putting the financial knee on the neck of the black community, and we're not gonna have it. It's just that simple. And I will, I will tell that, I will say that from the pulpit in, in, uh, in Malzoni. I'll say it on the streets, it does not make a difference. We can no longer accept the disrespect. So they're calling out our names, treating us any kind of way, all that, that's gonna cease, one way or the other. And we're not gonna throw a brick, we're not gonna light a match. We're just gonna hold on to our money. And we'll see how you like that. So be clear, I want to make sure I came to city council to say this, so that businesses will know that it's not a game and that we are not playing because we have played too long and we have been disrespected too long. So that disrespect will be no more. Now, people can take that how they want to take it, but as my mother used to tell me, I can show whoever that I can tell. Have a great day.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. I'd like to ask Committee to Stancing to the microphone.
Come in, man.
Come here.
Because I want to take my mask off. All right, um, Committee to Stancing, 127 Midway Lane, Tarberry, North Carolina, 27886. P.O. Box 1391, Iron Tops, 27864. I stand before you today, and I haven't been here in a while. One reason why is because of the pandemic, but also I get sick of folk talking about, I don't live in Rocky Mountain. I've been working here for thirty-three years and been more actively involved in Rocky Mountain politics than, than some of those who are running them out. But, um, I just want to say that the audit, maybe some folks can't comprehend. They, 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 these special folk, they sought out to get an audit done. It was completed. She did her findings. You all responded. She said she was done. So why do you, and I'm gonna say you, you know who I'm talking about, still speaking on the subject? She says she turned over the agencies. So what part of that picture you don't understand? All of you are intelligent. So why don't you leave it alone? I was looking at WHD-TV this morning, and I just sick of the division. Only thing they're doing is, 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 uh, promoting division in these, uh, websites, Rocky Mountain City Council. You all have the opportunity to still to tell them to shut it down. But no, you all, some of you are on social media promoting it, asking other folk on the council with you to prove themselves. But we need to stop it. I'm concerned about Rocky Mountain. Like I said, I've been here, I can't read Mr. Oldfellow, the longest tool in here. So I'm gonna continue, I've been working over there thirty-three years. I am a voice for the people. I have family and friends. And you'd be surprised who else I have over here. But that's none of anybody's business. But, um, WHD-TV and all these folk, you shut it down. And the monument needs to go. I served on the Rocky Mountain Human Relations Commission. We paid for a forty thousand dollar study. We did the study. Why are they still talking about that? These special folks need to understand, they don't run anything. You all was elected, whether they're lucky or not. They need to start respecting you all. And because this, this board is a black majority, well, they need to get over it. They got a problem with it. They got to do what they tell us to do, go somewhere. But I ain't, I ain't been nowhere for here. And I ain't going nowhere. So I stand before you today to tell you all, the board members, to talk to the folk in the community and tell them you need to go away. And I've created enough divisions. Let Rocky Mountain move forward. Talking about people ain't coming, businesses ain't coming. People coming every day. Help, shut them down yourself. Tell them it's quick. So Rocky Mountain can continue to move forward. They moving forward. They doing a great job, being followed across the nation. I commend this board for doing what you do. Continue to work together.
Thank you.
Everest.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Cooper Blackwell to the microphone.
Um, greetings. I stand before you today, I'm Cooper Blackwell, resident of Rocky Mountain, lifetime resident of Rocky Mountain. I live in Ward 3, and I'm representative of the Rocky Mountain Black Action Committee, uh, which is a youth-led movement, uh, here in Rocky Mountain uh, that led the protest, um, about two weeks ago, uh, on March 31st. Today, we would like to say that our demands have been made, and we've stated changes that we'd like to see. Uh, you all agreed and come to the conclusion, uh, with, uh, pieces of our, some of our demands um, in regards to the statute and that it should be moved, uh, with the exception of Councilman W. B. Bullock. Um, the outcome of this protest, which took place on March 31st, resulted in a remedy that some of the members of our council have been asking for for years. Um, approved on June 8th, um, it has been fourteen days since the resolution has been approved. And within this time, we've seen both people and systems beginning to take the appropriate steps necessary to bring about a revolution. By removing the monument, we are waking up, getting out of the bed, stretching and exercising liberation from systemic principles that were created to divide our communities. So city attorney, we would like to know, uh, has the research been complete, uh, in regards to the legal status of it being moved? Uh, if, uh, we also. If, we'd also like to know if there has been additional information that has been given to the city in regards to ways to get that done? City Manager, we appreciate the resolutions that were put forth. We did feel like some of the language was accommodationist, specifically when it talks about preserving the monument. As we know that, and it's been agreed upon with our resolutions that black lives matter and that it's a systemic racist issue. And considering this is the center of it all, having, uh, idiom having something that is a spectacle of white supremacy in the center of our city, it's not attractive to investors, it's not attractive to people who wish to instill principles of equity within their children. And it's unacceptable to agree in any way, fashion, or form that this monument should be preserved. So we would, as a committee, would like to offer our services to the council as well as, as regards to assisting with the improvement of racial equity within the, in the city. Also, we would like to-
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
Yes, I appreciate that. And we look forward to getting some more information in fifteen days. We'll be in contact.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask Mr. Bronson Williams to the mic.
Once I got into the mayor's council, I wanted to, to speak today, a number of issues. One being, here recently, we've seen a number of state emergencies from this institution. I believe that since the black man and woman has come to America, there has never been a state of emergency to deal with white supremacy. There's never been a, a crop to deal with the real issues that are facing black and brown people here in the state. So I'd urge our mayor to perhaps look at ways he could work to deal with some of these issues. However, I have some reserve of that, because when I look on social media and see statements approving that someone paid already a written-off utility bill, it reminds me of historical contexts in which they would find the leader slave, the one who wanted something to change in society, and they say, "I'm gonna make a, a image out of you, I'm gonna make an example, rather, out of you, so I'm gonna hate you, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna rip you, I'm gonna do all of these things to you so that the other people can know, to know your place." We don't live in America like that, or at least I hope that we don't. And I hope that the elected officials that were elected by these citizens of Rocky Mountain would also show the true leadership and courage not to get into, involve, rather, into this foolishness. Prove what? It's been written off? Unless there's a, a double standards in which we live in a democracy in which you can write off something and then come back and claim for what you paid for, I don't know where that happened unless that's what they've been doing to black folks for years and we didn't know that either. Maybe that's what we're dealing with today. So often, we talk about getting over slavery, but yet you want black folks to get over a Confederate monument. But I don't understand where we are. But maybe throughout the course of this conversation, we'll finally get to a real place of unity, a real place of respecting each other, a real place of equity, a real place of economic development that benefits not just some folks, but all folks. I just hope that this city will continue with strong and bold and courageous leadership and doing the things that will establish that equity. And anytime I see that you don't, I, I can talk about that too. But I believe that we're moving in the right direction. And for someone to talk about what's happening with the status of the LGC and, and what's happening with downtown development, I remember being at a city council meeting at this council and manager talked about updating those things. People have to get involved to stay involved. Don't just get caught up in the moments, but get caught up in the real work of changing and reshaping and transforming Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. God bless each and every one of you and every citizen of Rocky Mountain.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At this point in time, I'd like to back item seven, I'm sorry, skip that, and present a proclamation proclaimed in the month of July twenty-twenty, this park and recreation lot.
The population of the city of Rocky Mountain clear as parks and recreation programs for people of all ethnicities throughout this country, including the city of Rocky Mountain. Clear as parks and recreation, otherwise important, is now seeking and maintaining for all the life we can achieve, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental, well-being of the community and region. And clear as parks and recreation programs for healthy, active communities. Today is the prevention of chronic disease. While there are huge recommendations for those who are mentally deficient and sick, it improves the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And clear as parks and recreation programs increase the community's environmental security, increase market value, expansion of local tax base, increase tourism, attraction, and services, and product production. And clear as parks and recreation areas, food mills, the environmental, safety, power, improve water quality, protect groundwater, and flooding, improve the quality of air, provide measured water for workers to develop and produce half-landed water. And clear as parks and natural recreation areas, ensure the equalized community of our community provide a place to filter, and filter, and protect, and nature, and create output. And clear as U.S. Congress representatives have designated by as parks and recreation parks, city of Rocky Mountain recognizes the initiative throughout the parks and recreations. Now, for I see some of the groups, of urgency, of wanting to be a fairer city of Rocky Mountain. In year 2020, we are in a point, this parks and recreation project, city of Rocky Mountain, following policies, our great city of Rocky Mountain, what you all think you like, build cities across the United States, recognizing and participating in such things.
Okay, item number nine, is Councilman Walker with us? Is he connected by the microphone?
Eric, Sam, uh, Robinson.
Yes, sir. Councilman Knight.
Before we move into item number nine, I got a big confusion with Johnson members, but before we move into item number nine, the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
We ask our city manager to give us a list, community, an update on removal of Confederate statues. Not to get into the details, but let our citizens know that it's very sensitive and important, and it's an urgency. As we see Confederate statues and monuments all across this country coming down, being taken down, some being pulled down. But I think that we deserve to give our citizens a update on where we are. I know we're gonna have a closed session to discuss it. You don't have to get into, uh, the details, but let our citizens know that it's, that we're not turning the debt here to this, to this issue. Thank you.
Councilman Knight, that's more than an appropriate adjustment to the itinerary. Do you have a brief follow-up, perhaps, that you can provide, as an update to your community update?
Sure, be happy to do that, and thank you for the opportunity. And as already been mentioned, there will be a closed session this afternoon following the regular meeting for council to discuss two options that are out here for us. One is a group of people who have come forward and expressed an ish, an interest in moving the monument. And then secondly, of course, is our interest, the city's interest, to move the monument. Both do carry financial implications. And so my recommendation would be that we have the action taken within at least two weeks to have the monument moved. The city has spoken with, and we do have a contractor who will be prepared to remove the monument in the event that the private concern is not able to move it within two weeks.
Thank you, city manager. All right, moving on now to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. Consent of tax releases and refunds. Schedule A, taxes under a hundred dollars approved for release and or refund by the city manager. And Schedule B, taxes over a hundred dollars recommended for release and or refund by the city council. B, consideration of following fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one ordinances, project ordinances, the Tar River Transit. Tar River Transit, five million, six hundred thirteen dollars and eight hundred two dollars requires managing appropriations of four hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars. A, urban transit operating project, one million, four oh nine, zero six two. B, urban transit capital project, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. C, transit system planning project, forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Rural transit operating project, two million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. And the rural transit capital project at three hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. The rural transit feeder system, feeder pro, system feeder project at one hundred ninety-two thousand. And B, or two, community development, IDG, community development block grant, entitled grant projects, five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred forty dollars. And home investment partnership grant project, four hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred five dollars, which requires managing appropriation of fifty thousand. Item three is the coronavirus emergency supplemental grant program at one hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars. Recommended action is to approve the consent agenda, inclusive of approval of tax releases and adoption of ordinances. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Turner, clear second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knight. Is there a call for discussion?
I do have, uh, make, make a comment, since we approved the coronavirus emergency supplement grant pro, program.
I recognize Councilman Knight.
Yes. City manager, in your update, you did not cover the COVID pandemic, which is still continuing to plague this city and the state and this country. Some of the council members did mention that we would like an update on that. Also, we mentioned our, the city of Rocky Mountain, and this council and this board is gonna move towards mandatory, Mr. Johnson, you wanna take the mandatory mask throughout the city? I yield to Councilman Johnson, and then Councilman Walker. Excuse me, Councilmember Blackwell, thank you.
Yes, uh-
I recognize Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to, for our council, Mayor, city manager, city, city, uh, recommend a public mask in the city of Rocky Mountain. Looking at the, the rise of pandemic in our area. It is one way that has been proven to help create a more safer environment.
Is there any other discussion on this sort of topic?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Those communities that are proactive, I don't just think the data is there, the science is there. Those communities in those states that are proactive in communicating with their constituents about safety measures and protocols, and making available testing opportunities, and then are creating more than a recommendation about safety, seem to fare better. As far as controlling community spread, COVID is not gonna go away unless we make it go away. And I am very favorable of taking a motion toward an action, I'm sorry, not just a motion, not a way, of taking action as a city, that we value our people's lives. And if we have to encourage folk by, you know, passing ordinance or whatever, saying that we should mask every time we go out in public, I'm fully favorable of that. Because people are infected, younger people who are infected, who I don't see masking, might have a disease, are asymptomatic, and have great chances of spreading that disease to other people who are much more vulnerable today. Also, because this disease is in the early stage of being worked out, we don't know the science yet of how COVID impacts major organ systems and how the potential impacts of that disease can play out in society. So I am willing to say an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I think an ounce of masking is worth whatever vaccine will ultimately be discovered and applied. So I, I am favorable of passing something that would require us to mask and protect ourselves.
Right, and I think that's probably appropriate to entertain as a separate motion outside the consent agenda. I have a motion, the second on the consent agenda. Is there any need for discussion, or any additional discussion on the matter of the fourth floor? Hearing on, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember nine?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Non-tradition?
I want to verify we're voting on, as in our agenda, this consent agenda and not the addition, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
So, Councilman Blackwell, if you'd like to add that at the end of the meeting, then perhaps in that inappropriate time to, to add that.
Okay, the end of our agenda. Yes, sir. Sure.
Okay, that brings us to item number ten, which is a public hearing relative to the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one annual action plan for the city of Rocky Mountain and the Down East Home Consortium. Required for eligibility for home partnership investment funds and CDVG entitlement allocation. Public review and comment period, June eighth, will be June eighth or July eighth, twenty-twenty. Recommended action is to receive a comment. I do have a number of folks who wish to comment. So I will call Linda Brinson to the mic.
Good afternoon. Linda Brinson is a director for United Community Ministers. And our United Community Ministry has been in the city for about forty-three years now. And we are serving, we represent the National Ishcombe County. And we also have like four programs that we have here, which is the community shelter. And also, we served like a hundred and ninety-six individuals last year. So, we served over seven thousand last year, and four counties, about two hundred and seventy-four households. And if that's sound, we give like forty-two pounds. The issue of something that I would like to bring to the attention of the city by council is that community shelter was not approved for by the community government budget this year due to a decrease in funding. And we applied for thirty thousand and to be denied could not have come at a worse time since this pandemic's been on. And then also that our donation decreased. And obviously, this funding has had a great impact on our budget for the community shelter. In the past years, we have received anywhere from twenty thousand to thirty thousand for the community shelter. And this particular period, we've seen nothing. And I truly believe that instead of just cutting out funding for an essential program for this area, that maybe a ten percent decrease could have been done for each program and so that each program could continue to serve Nash Rocky Mountain area. And in turn, each essential program could continue to serve the resident of Nash and Ishcombe County. UCM, the community shelter, is a vital part to this community. Within the past five years, UCM had already paid over four hundred fifty thousand dollars in utilities for both shelters, also deposits, utilities, and also utility arrears for clients to the city of Rocky Mountain. Our budget is like three hundred and eighty-five thousand compared to the four hundred fifty thousand that we used to have, which would give some decrease, and two hundred and thirty-eight thousand is for the community shelter. Uh, if I was funding from the city, it may come to a front for closing one facility. Uh, we have from a staff of eighteen to eleven, and we still continue to serve the people in this area and not cutting any of the services that we provide. On behalf of UCM, for the director, myself, and the community we serve, we are requesting that the city council make a recommendation for UCM proposal in the upcoming RFP for the public service activity, uh, August twenty twenty. Uh, the funding on that is like seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. And I would like, uh, for you to keep in mind that United Community Ministry is an essential service provider for the homeless and the poor residents of Nash and Nash County, and we have been providing services for forty-three years to Nash and Nash County residents. And, uh, on behalf of UCM Board, I thank you, uh, for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Brinson. I'd like to ask Ms. Lisa Nelson to the party.
Hi.
Doctor Nelson.
Back again. How are y'all? Um, I'm here representing a group of conservative citizens that, um, as I stated last time, are really interested in economic development for all of Rocky Mountain. Uh, we reviewed the ratio plan that you guys had several years ago, and, and that ratio plan is a perfect example of how development has been siphoned to the Nash County and traditionally underserved Nash County was left out. For instance, the monk to mill trail, the mills fully developed, looks beautiful. I guarantee you, most people don't even know where Thelonious Monk Park is, but when you go there, it's not even properly maintained. I don't understand how you can even conceive of utilizing the history of the people to enrich the people that usually oppress those people. One of the key concepts of the ratio plan was placemaking, the historic district, the art district, the entertainment district. And key to placemaking is to enhance quality of life, achieve larger economic goals, and bring dollars to the area. And the other goal was mitigation of gentrification, which actually the plan didn't even address. Uh, they didn't have any strategies in place to prevent the economic disparities that come with gentrification. So our group got together, and we put together a proposal that we would like you to consider. We feel that the Black Lives Matter recognition that is currently going on now, right now, the energy around the world has exposed many of the negatives that have gone along with economic and racial discrimination. And in response, there's resources flowing from corporations and individuals, foundations for communities that have been affected by economic disparity, to have restorative economics bought into those communities. We're proposing a geographic area downtown Rocky Mountain to identify a Black Business Matters Zone to capitalize on that energy, which we all know is not going to last. That zone can provide funding to economic businesses and real estate development that will provide business opportunities, will then help bring people in that area more economic power to afford the housing that you want to build. The initiative is an excellent opportunity, it'll develop downtown buildings and infrastructure, capitalize on existing downtown expansions, capitalize on establishing new businesses. We already have people moving in from other saturated markets. I bought two of them in myself. Green flows when we capitalize on the rich history of this town, which is black history. Thelonious Monk, Monk Who's the Kid, Sugar Ray Leonard, if Black Rocky Mountain rises, we all rise. And I hear the bell ringing, but I want you all to consider funding an initiative to develop a foundation to fund those businesses. If we revitalize downtown, everybody wins. If the, the city capital will consider funding the staff, a fifty thousand dollar budget, whatever you all think, to get this, you have downtown businesses that have bought into this, you have people such as myself. I'm not a business person, I'm a doctor, but I believe that fixing economic disparities will affect what I love, which is the health of and well-being of everybody. Uh, I don't want to over my time.
I'd like to ask Ms. Troy Davis to the party.
Yeah, Chelsea, Troy Davis, fifteen twenty-five, Metro Room. Um, the code today, because, um, last council meeting I wasn't able to be here, I was, had a full on agenda, but Mayor spoke on, uh, recruiting a real developer to downtown, and it kind of touched me. I'm spending three million of my hard-earned dollars in downtown Rocky Mountain, and if you don't think that I'm a real developer, I think you need to rethink things. I don't know what classifies someone to be a real developer, maybe my skin tone isn't light enough, but we need to kind of, I need to know where you stand as far as my development in downtown Rocky Mountain. And secondary, um, I want to speak on the statue coming down, that statue needs to come down now, um, immediately. Every city around us has removed their statue. I don't care if it's a hundred and sixty-two tons, I don't care if it's a thousand and twenty-five tons, Raleigh removed five within three days. It needs to come down now.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, I'd like to, uh, remind everybody, the public comment period is June eighth through June, July eighth, 2020, and just in response to the last speaker, I appreciate anyone and everyone who is willing to spend dollars in the development of the downtown area and ask forgiveness for import choice of the pressology. That moves us on to item number eleven, which is the consideration of fiscal year 2020, 2021 Budget Ordinance and Amendments to Fees and Charges.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For the city manager in reference to, uh, Ms. Linda Brinson, uh, just spoke during the public hearing, that, um.
Pressology, Councilman Knight.
That UCM was not funded to thirty thousand. Um, I was looking in my notes, um, I know my sister's house was on that, and I understand why that was not funded at that time, but I can't remember if UCM was on that list, and if so, uh, how much was it funded, and if not, why it was not funded.
Yes, I would have to yield to, uh, the director, because I don't have the details in front of him, but Ms. Jones, if you could, um, address that question, please.
Good afternoon. Um, UCM, they were funded, um, for seven thousand dollars for the vast extension. We're in the process of scheduling a contract to sign that agreed for that, the award.
Were they, uh, did they ask for, uh, any additional funding for the seven, seven thousand?
Yes, sir. They did ask for an additional amount, but, you know, in the last, um, in the last document that we did present to council, it did indicate there was proposed funding to fund UCM, the COVID nineteen CARES Act, but in that process, there has been other discussion as to how those funds will be, um, allocated, and it's never said it's going right now for those dollars.
Okay, so, city manager, so that's a possibility that in the code of funding, that they would refund it, what we would normally fund it, correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's what I'm interpreting, uh, Ms. Jones, as a, as a possible.
And we would communicate that with, uh, UCM.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question, uh, in reference to the public hearing, um, Dr. Nelson mentioned about Black Lives Matter, uh, I would like to ask the city manager if we could give Dr. Nelson and, uh, and the Black Action Network Committee, um, some technical support, uh, with the Black Lives Matter, uh, Business District in downtown, and also with the funding. Uh, it reminds me, uh, when, uh, the, um, information came out, Opportunity Zone, so this is another, um, uh, opportunity to right a wrong as far as economic justice, in that we know that there are companies, uh, major companies that contribute, uh, monies in reference to Black Lives Matter and empowering African-Americans in, in economic development. And so, uh, I would ask, or ask this council, if we could, uh, have a staff person, uh, to contact, uh, Mr. Cooper Blackwell and Dr. Nelson and her group, and to work along with them to create this Black Lives, well, this African-American district, which we traditionally have wanted up this block, but to expand it and also, like, funding it for, to help, um, new businesses, businesses downtown, and to expand the current businesses downtown, and to locate new businesses downtown. And, uh, if I need to come back and have Mr. Blackwell make that motion, I'll let him come back and make the motion that we would have a staff person to provide technical support to help this initiative get, get done. Very time-sensitive at this time. How do you advise, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to take that up at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
In fact, uh, it's determined that we need something, uh, you know, short, emotional that I'm not sure on this matter that really would require, since we're just doing some preliminary work, but I'll defer to our city to it when we get to the end of the meeting. With that said, we've had a public hearing, are there any other, uh, points or comments that anybody else has observed that they feel like they would like to, uh, speak to at this point?
I want a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to ask the, the, the manager, I'm still a little unclear, with UCM, you are saying that we will try to support that thirty thousand dollar request.
Yes, sir.
In some way.
In some way.
Some, some flow, right? Is this one or something else?
That's correct, and we'll let you know how we're able to do that, if we're able to fund the full thirty thousand.
And, and the reason, I would just want to say it again, just knowing how COVID spreads, um, one of the vulnerable and at-risk populations that affect more than them as individuals are people who are homeless, so I think it would really be critical, uh, to include them in whatever initiative we're doing.
Right, and I, I believe this CARES Act specifically speaks to homeless, and so that's why we would recommend the shipping.
Thank you.
You have questions or observations, or?
I just want clarification.
Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Um, so, UCM has asked that they requested thirty thousand dollars, and we didn't, we did not fund that because it was going to, they were going to fund it through the CARES, um, funding, am I, am I understanding correctly, or did I hear something?
Well, you are, and I think, um, if we go back to the amount of money that we had to begin with for pu- public service, was something like seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars. So this is a very small pot with a lot of needs here in the community, so we look for other sources of funding that might assist, uh, the agencies if it can't come out of the public service, so that's why the CARES Act funding seemed to be, um, helpful in helping them to, uh, be funded at the request of the amount.
So, so next year, when there's CARES funding not available, then they get, may or may not be funded, all the agencies may or may not be funded, I guess, depending on the funds available.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, did we increase funds to a particular agency, and, and reduce it to, or is it just, um, reduce it to the UCM, or was it funds available?
I, I don't recall us increasing. Again, this is such a very small pot of money, I think there are about five agencies that are funded from this money, so we don't have the luxury of increasing, um, to, to do that, but, um, to your earlier question or statement, you know, next year is, you know, who, who knows what would happen next year, but I would trust that the agency would understand that this is a one-time, and they usually do consider it one-time, because you don't really know, um, you know, what, what might, uh, be in the future for funding for the city. So they'll get it this year as, you know, other agencies have been funded, and then next year, we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay, let's move on to item number eleven in the agenda, which is the consideration of the fiscal year 2021 Budget Ordinance and Amendments to Fees and Charges. A, fiscal year 2020, 2021 Budget Ordinance establishes appropriations for fiscal year 2021 and sets ad hoc rate of tax rate at one six eight five cents per one hundred dollars of taxable asset value. This is the same tax rate as the current fiscal year. Item B is amendment to fees and charges. A, one, Department of Public Works, policy number ten, uh, dot eight dot five, solid waste transportation tipping fee. And C, Policies and Departments of Human Resources, position classification of pay plan, which includes funding for eight new positions. Recommended action is to adopt the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Budget Ordinance, adopt resolution amending fees and charges listed above, and three, to adopt resolution approving revised position and classification plan. Do I have a motion? Motion made by?
I'm voting.
Uh, moved by, uh, Councilman Turner, seconded by Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion on this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackwell.
Councilman Dr. Drich.
Um, page three, we have page three of, uh, we got transfers from other funds of three point, three million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which includes, um, transfers from, I believe, the electric fund, sorry, electric fund, um, two million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is an increase, and then the water fund, uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand. My concern, now that we can hit, uh, Mr. Hunter, um, with COVID nineteen and moratorium on utility payments, and I know we've, we've got a huge, a hundred and fifty percent increase of people that are eligible to have their utilities cut off due to the moratorium or not, which is also an increase of two million dollars of, of funds that haven't been paid and passed due, my concern is, can we depend on this electric fund, because we don't know how long the moratorium, uh, is going to go on, and are we going to need to do, I, I'm just concerned with the, with this, it's an increase, and then also, I don't find the additions matching, I see where the electric and water, um, total three million, fifty thousand dollars, where's the other five hundred thousand dollars coming from?
To answer your second question first, the other five hundred thousand dollars comes from the occupancy tax, which is not part of the, the ordinance, the occupancy tax is a project ordinance, so it will be done during the coming fiscal year. So that's where the additional five hundred thousand dollars comes from. To answer the first question, uh, in preparing this budget, we did evaluate and explain during the budget development process that, uh, when we came to the forecasting of revenues in the electric fund, we pretty much had to continue as we had in the past, and we did do a pretty effective job with respect to the forecasting. Obviously, uh, the situation involving, uh, the current, the current environment, as well as the challenges that are associated with the disconnect, with the disconnect moratorium that's in place here in the city and also with the state, does, um, is something that we do have to evaluate. We do not anticipate any write-offs in fiscal year 2021. If there are any write-offs, they would probably be in fiscal year 2022, there's, uh, due to the time nature of, of write-offs, if there were needed to be any, and that's going to affect our budget, prior to that, it really doesn't. With respect to cash flow, we do have, uh, we do feel like we are in pretty good shape with respect to cash flow, we have been putting money aside, and we also continue to put money aside into great stabilization, which helps our cash flow, and so we believe we are in the appropriate position to make this request, which is, which is consistent with our, um, uh, transfer policy with respect to how it's calculated in respect to the asset value of the electric fund.
In follow-up, Mr. Mayor, um, and this, I don't know if this is from Mr. Hunter or the matter manager, but it was mentioned write-offs, um, and it's my understanding, do we, when are we going to do utility write-offs? It was mentioned earlier about Mr. Harris, is it now, I mean, at the end, the next meeting we have, or when, when do we do that?
Well, the staff hasn't recommended that just yet, so I'm not exactly sure when it will be forthcoming.
Is it historically then?
Towards the end of the, end of the fiscal year.
Which is, Matt, right?
Towards the end of fiscal year, so as you move from one fiscal year into the next year, I think that's.
So probably next meeting, I think.
Uh, I, I won't, you know, I don't, I won't say next meeting, but I'm sure that it will bring.
Okay, well, next meeting, I think, is our last meeting of this year.
Pat Vasquez.
Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
So, I assume what Mr. Dr. Drich is asking for is a change in policy and protocol, because we've never voted on write-offs, we've never, to my knowledge, unless they've been included in the budget, I don't recall having. Have you ever presented?
Uh, I, I won't, you know, I don't, I won't say next meeting, but administrative rule, right?
Okay, well, next meeting, I think, is our last meeting of fiscal year.
Good night, Vastic.
Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
So, I assume what Mr. Daughtry is asking for is a change in policy and protocol? Because we've never voted for more write-offs. We've never, to my knowledge, unless they've been included in the budget. And I don't recall having, have you ever presented?
Yes, sir.
Write-offs, Ken?
Yes, sir.
So, um, I don't even understand the terminology about when we're going to approve it. That's something that's administrative, um, detailed position. And if you're requesting that to occur, then I think that should be made to form a request. And I think we do need discussion around that.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a thought?
Yes, please.
Well, it, it was brought up during our, during the whole audit in response by Councilman Mike, who to WTVD announced that we did $21 million write-off over, I think, 20 years. And then it was posted on social media and that was news to me. And then it's my understanding that through various sources that we write that off. And I think that's probably more a question of the state, the finance director. If we don't do it, we should do it. And, um, and I think we should, we should also look at the, um, criteria for writing off utilities because obviously we have some issues there.
Can I speak?
Yes, Councilman Mike.
Uh, we never had any issues before. And for the record, uh, this council has nev- ever reviewed any write-offs. We have never, ever approved any write-offs. Because if that's the case, it could be very political. So I prefer to stay within the finance, uh, uh, that, in the business office that would, uh, have the, have their information and to prove those. Also, um, you brought up social media. And to you and Mayor Sandy Robinson, on June 17th, 2020, Wednesday at 10:40 AM, it's approved, this is a true, Councilman Mike, about, uh, write-offs of preferential treatment. Again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Daughtry, I never received any preferential treatment, never had any knowledge of any write-offs. And the write-offs that Beth Woods included in her audit, whatever the number was, it could not be substantiated by this, this city, this business office, this finance director. And I'm told, if you pull your report, you see something, you disagree, you ask why it's up there, they can't prove it, then it's not yours. So let's put that to rest. Beth did have done her audit, we have responded. And getting back to the write-offs, we never, to my knowledge, ever seen a list of write-offs. The write-off came up in the audit-